September 1st, 2020 is called to order. Let's rise and do the pledge and have Joe Schmidt lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe.
I was waiting when you were going to call my number, Kevin.
I'll give you another one next week then.
All right, I'm I'm due, it's okay.
Down here, Joe times two, there we go, all right.
Great.
All right. Let's move on to our study study agenda, then Troy Nichols of Phillips Burgess Government Relations is here to discuss our legislative priorities. Troy, you're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and staff. It's good to be with you this afternoon. I don't know, Jeff, if I have to share or can share the PowerPoint that I provided?
Yeah, if if you have the the ability, go ahead. If not, we can get that done here. You have that that button?
Let me get it going.
All right, there we go.
That work?
That works.
So you can see the slide deck and not my Outlook email. Okay. Well, I think the idea tonight was for me to give kind of a bit of a contextual overview of where we are post-primary election and then where we are for the budget outlooks heading into the 2021 legislative session. And then we'll get into a little bit more detailed discussion about some potential projects that we can pursue funding for and then yeah, open it up for for discussion. So if I had that right, Jeff, I'll jump right in and then but please, if there are any questions along the way, please interrupt me and and ask away because I hope I hope this is more of an interactive session than just me talking for the next 10 to 15 minutes. So in terms of the agenda for tonight, again, the the general election outlook and and not to get political or root for one side or the other, and just obviously what we do in the legislature come 2021 will be impacted by what happens in November. So I'll just briefly go over some of the results from the primary and what to expect in the general in terms of leadership and and committee chairmanships. And then my plan was to talk a little bit about the operating budget because that's the big kahuna that dominates the discussion. Once we come in January and you all read the news, you know, with COVID-19 and some of the impacts, the the revenue situation is a little bit bleak, but we'll go into some detail there and then talk about sort of the the capital budget and transportation budget dynamics, which is typically where we pursue our priorities and the the work that I do on behalf of you to secure funding for projects in the city takes place. And then, you know, we can ask questions to answer questions after that, and then we'll get into the detailed discussion about some potential priorities that we want to pursue come come 2021. Just to give you kind of a recap, and most of you know this already, obviously, the Democrats do control both chambers of the legislature. The current makeup in the Senate is 2821 and the House, it's 5741. And I think the ironic thing after the primary election last month, you know, you have 123 different races on the ballot just in the legislature alone. And I think that the when it all comes, when it's all said and done, there are about nine seats that have the potential to switch from one party to the other. I think that is a testament to maybe the Earl urban rural divide and, you know, even though we have a pretty fair redistricting process in the state, which we're going to go through next year, actually, or start. All the all the campaigning and all of the the spending, it comes down to about five, nine or 10 seats that are actually up for grabs following the primary election. Just alone with the results from the primary, if if the primary was the general, you'd have a no net change in the Senate in 2021 in terms of the partisan split. And in the House, you might actually have a couple of Republican pickups, but again, a decent majority for the Democrats there. So I don't expect too much to change come November 4. In terms of the leadership, again, the majorities aren't going to change, so you're likely going to see Speaker Lori Jenkins come back for her second session as Speaker and Senate Majority Leader Andy Billing, he'll be back as the Majority Leader of the Senate. And then for the committees that we pay attention to primarily the well, all three budget committees, operating, capital and transportation, we expect all the chairs and the ranking members to come back with the one exception, which is Richard DeVault, who's retiring from the 20th Legislative District to South of here. He has been the Republican Ranking Member on Capital Budget for the last several sessions. And it's expected that Mike Steele from the 12th Legislative District, which is Lake Shalane out in Eastern Washington, he will likely take Richard's place on Capital Budget Committee, which is good because I know he's he's a sharp guy and he's he's budged during the Q and they both serve on the the House Appropriations Committee together. So that that will bode well for us in the future. Other than that, all the chairs and ranking committees in terms of appropriations, ways and means, transportation will largely remain unchanged. And then just finally, the same thing with the 35th Legislative Delegation, obviously, Senator Sheldon is midterm, so he's not on the ballot in November. And you saw Representatives Griffey and McEwen after all the votes were tallied with commanding double-digit leads. I think Representative Griffey was up by 16 points and Drew McEwen was up by, I think, 13 at last count. So my expectation is they'll be back. The primary tends to be the the biggest indicator of the general when when all the votes are tallied. So no big shakeup, no big change, similar dynamics to what we faced, at least politically in the in the past several sessions we've worked together. Now, just to kind of give you a snapshot here, most of you have seen the news in terms of the June revenue forecast. That was the first one post-COVID that everybody was waiting on. And we saw almost a $9 million reduction in the projection revenue over the next three years, you know, a little over half of that would be impacted on this current biennium and and the other half in the next biennium, which would be 2021, 23. Now, I think at the beginning, everybody thought that we would be in special session, not only to do some additional appropriations for the COVID response, but also just get a jump on the revenue reduction. And if you start to, you know, if you make cuts earlier in the operating budget, you spread that pain over a longer period of time. And for the first, the end of spring and early summer, I think the conventional wisdom was that we were going to be back in special session. However, as you know, that's changed, and I don't really expect for them to come back in special session at all. If they do, it will be after the election. A couple of reasons for that, at least what the the leadership in the legislature has said, obviously, we're waiting on the next round of the federal relief package from Congress, which is still in negotiations. And then there's also a little bit of an indication that there might be a bit of an economic rebound in taking place, obviously not coming back to the levels that we enjoyed pre-COVID. But if you look at state revenue collections, they were up about 600 million higher than expected in June and July. So which is good news on multiple fronts. So we'll have a clearer picture come towards the end of September. The next revenue forecast is September 23rd, and we'll have a have a more clear picture of where the state stands in terms of its operating budget revenue. Just looking ahead to 2021, I I would suggest that, you know, it it would be very difficult, especially for the majority party and for any party, quite frankly, to do a cuts-only budget, just because 9 billion is a lot to cut out of the last few months of the current biennium and the next biennium. And so and then you have sort of this good chunk of the operating budget is quote-unquote constitutionally protected, meaning it's tough to cut K through 12 pensions, labor contracts and and debt service. That that takes up three quarters of the state budget right there, and it's hard to get beyond that. So that being said, the state does have a little bit more than $3 billion in reserves, so that will help obviously assuage the pain. But I would remind folks that it does take a supermajority to tap that reserve and hopefully they can get an agreement early on that and take care of the priorities. There's also discussion of revenue, new revenue. It's hard to say what that would look like. Some of the bigger ticket items, like you've heard about a capital gains tax or an income tax, they they can't be relied upon just simply because legal challenges will tie that up for a couple of years. And so if they're looking to balance the budget on those new revenue sources, they can't count on that because there'll obviously be a challenge to those. And then, you know, whether it's you fall back on the the tried and true items, an increase in the sales tax or the B and O tax, sin taxes, you know, the one thing that hasn't taken a revenue hit during this COVID is obviously alcohol and marijuana. So who knows, we might see some increases there, but I would expect some sort of revenue package, you know, to be debated in upcoming legislative session. Turning to the capital budget, you know, always when there's been an economic downturn, and I went through this and as a staffer in the legislature before, there's tremendous pressure for budget writers to sweep the capital budget in terms of and to help balance the operating budget. And that typically, you, as local elected officials know, the typical targets for that are the Public Works Assistance Account, some of the MOTCA funds, some of the other ongoing revenue streams that should go to capital projects or environmental restoration or local local government infrastructure, those typically get swept in a in a downturn. But at the same time, the bond capacity, I you don't typically see legislators bond for the operating budget. It's kind of like putting your light bill or your electricity bill on the credit card. It's very rare where you see them actually issue 25-year general obligation bonds for operating expenses. So I would expect that the bond capacity will remain and be similar to what we saw last biennium, which is about $3.2 billion. And as you know, that's where we receive typically our funding, that that pot of money from for our local and community projects. And just as a reminder, before we head into the larger discussion about what what we want to go after, if you look at the previous biennium, they spent about $163 million for 298 projects across the state, and that average is about half a million bucks each. But the range for those local and community projects is anywhere from $14,000 to 4.7 million. So even though, you know, the average is is lower, there are some larger ticket items that make it into that part of the capital budget. And then moving to the transportation budget, obviously, you know, the every year it's about 10 or every biennium, it's about $10 billion. But unfortunately, from a dollar standpoint, you know, we're still dealing with the effects of I-976, which was the $30 card tabs issue. I know Joe knows probably more about this than I do, but looking over a six-year period, but they're projecting about a $1.9 billion reduction in the resources that are available to the transportation budget over the next six years. And the bulk of that comes out of the multi-modal multi-modal account, which funds a lot of our public transportation needs, rail, buses, things like that. However, as we've seen discussion in the past, a lot of times lawmakers, especially the the two gentlemen who chair the transportation committees in the House and the Senate, tend to want to balance that hit to other, you know, local infrastructure projects, highway preservation, and shift some funds so all of the pain isn't felt in the multimodal account. We can debate the merits of that, but that tends to be the inclination of where the budget writers want to go. And then just from a COVID standpoint, there are some significant hits to the to the next biennium in the budget simply for because ridership is down, whether it's the buses or rail. You know, I represent a client in Olympia that has a direct interest in the Amtrak Cascades, and they've seen a 95% reduction in ridership on Amtrak Cascades since the the pandemic hit. So that just gives you a little bit of context of what what they're looking at. There is talk in both chambers and both leaderships of again, putting forth the statewide transportation package. In in previous years, it's been about a $17 billion proposal from the Senate. Senator Hobbs proposed that last year. And it we're look, it's looking like the House is going to offer their own version. Lot of new fee increases, lot of new taxes. The biggest difference between the two chambers, obviously, is that carbon fee. Senator Hobbs had a carbon tax in there to pay for fish culverts, which is, as you know, is a big ticket item. But at the end of the day, the dynamic has shifted with COVID because now they're going to be looking at a transportation to replace some of the revenues that have been lost. So that's it, the focus of the expenditures side is going to be a little bit different just because we're in a different dynamic than when these plans were first put together. So that is sort of in a nutshell, an overview of what we're looking at in 2021. So I would be more than happy to pause here. I've been talking a lot and answer any questions anybody might have. Kevin, you're muted, Mr. Mayor.
There we go.
All right.
Any questions for Troy? So far? Okay.
It was so clear and comprehensive, all of your questions were answered.
Well, I think you've done a wonderful job of giving us an idea of what we actually do know right now, with the reality being a lot has yet to come down the pipe, and we're going to have to see the results from that as we move forward. But appreciate the background.
Yes, all of this could change tomorrow, and it has changed quite a bit. I, as you can imagine, I've given this presentation to other folks over the last two months, and I have literally had to update this PowerPoint two or three different times every month because the circumstances just change on a dime, and I expect them to continue to do so.
Are you hearing anything specific to infrastructure projects? Oftentimes, that's used as an economic booster to get people back to work. I I've heard rumblings of, you know, Fed dollars for things like that and obviously state funds as well, putting putting up for things like that. But are you are you hearing anything specific on that front, things that we could be working on now?
Well, I think obviously they're kind of waiting to see what Congress comes up with. So that that's the number one thing in terms of what legislators are looking at. And I think the thing that that we have going for us as a city is the fact that you're exactly right, Joe. The the capital budget and transportation budget tends to be viewed as as jobs generators for the state, especially the capital budget, which is why I think that, you know, I don't know what's going to happen on the transportation side, but at least on the capital budget side, there's going to be a huge incentive to protect those bond, that bond capacity so they those dollars are spent on infrastructure projects that can keep people working and generate some additional revenue for the state. So nothing specific. The only specific thing that I've been hearing is obviously they're going to, they want to funnel some money to school districts for broadband or rural communities for broadband expansion because so many, as we were talking about before we officially started, 92% of students in Washington State are starting remote learning this month. And access is a big issue, especially in rural communities. And I know that the Department of Commerce has already let out some dollars for some pilot projects for expanding broadband access in underserved communities. So expect more of that.
Have you heard anything on the housing trust fund?
I have not, you know, they got a substantial amount of money in the previous biennium, one of the highest amounts, I think, I want to say since 2009. And again, you know, with that 3.2 billion in bond capacity, they're going to have to decide how much they want to dedicate to low-income housing versus, you know, you're going to have school projects coming online. And I think the the school construction account last session was over $1 billion, which was a little more than a third of the entire bond capacity. So you're going to have to balance those needs, right? But low-income housing has has been a priority in this legislature and this governor, and I would suspect that it will remain. So I don't know that they'll get the 190 million that they got before, but I would expect it to be substantial.
I I heard you mention MOTCA funds potentially being part of the sweep. I was I was curious because I believe we have, do we have a grant on the books right now for C Street that the C Street landfill that is tied up with MOTCA funds or not tied up, but would be receiving those MOTCA dollars? So I guess maybe solidifying our stake with that so it's re-appropriated or whatever in the next fiscal might be something to consider.
We we do, we do have a substantial amount of money dedicated for MOTCA funds to clean up C Street, and we can make that a priority as well to protect that if at all possible. I know that's a big, important project for the community. It's been a long time in common, so we can definitely add that to our list of priorities.
Yeah, with with all of the with all of the fiscal impacts that we're seeing, both, you know, and with from COVID, I-976, et cetera, I feel like more often than not that this this coming budget building year is is going to be defending, defending the funds that we've already sort of got appropriated and and defending sort of what we've got. So, you know, to keep to keep those funds flowing so we can can complete the projects. But on the other side, the other thought I had was funding for smaller dollar funding for design-level work for potential other infrastructure type of projects or even even certain certain funds for social health services type things to better understand and and plan for, you know, the housing issues and things like that.
Yeah, and I think we can flip over, Troy, to the priority list that we have so far. Happy to answer any questions about these projects. These are all projects that most of you are familiar with, all of you are familiar with, I think. On the policy side, we had the diversity and inclusion initiatives. A lot of those are coming through the Association of Washington Cities, which, after the Association of Washington Cities finalizes their legislative priorities, I'll share those with you. And then the state and local coordination for county jail space. We are not the only county by any means that are having issues with with jail facilities, but yeah, I think it's a high priority for a lot of municipalities and quite at most counties, too, I would imagine. And then on the capital project side, we have the Well One Modernization. These are all projects that have been on our priority list before, and the reason why we didn't add a whole bunch of new things is for the very reason you stated, Council member. A lot of this year is going to be playing defense, a lot of the next several years, I think, is going to be playing defense. So if you have any questions about any of the items on the list there, we'd be happy to answer those. The one modification we had because of the way our latecomers agreement request with WSP turned out last year was a direct appropriation to satisfy that late kind of latecomers agreement. Not that, you know, due to the state budget issues, not that we expect a whole lot of help on that front, but we do want to make sure that our legislators and our governor understand that that is a huge priority for us, particularly in the federally designated economic opportunity zone. So any questions about any of the the items that you see listed here or anything that you'd like to see added?
I'd just like to la one last comment on the on our priorities. I am happy with the infrastructure projects and in the latecomers agreement, of course, very strong on that. I was extremely happy to see, though, some policy level type issues that we can lobby for, especially on the diversity inclusion front. I just recently read an article in the New York Times about redlining in Richmond, Virginia in the 1930s and being able to to lobby for, whether it be funds or looking at policy in the legislature to sort of design or promote solutions that promote, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion. I think that's a great thing for the city of Shelton to to lobby for, especially with the times that we're in right now.
Well, and I I just say on that, you know, Jeff and I have talked over the last couple of years or last year. So typically, I represent you in Olympia trying to secure funding for these capital or infrastructure projects, but if there are policy issues that arise during a session where we have a specific Shelton-based story to tell, I'm happy to go in the committee and give that testimony and talk to legislators on your behalf. So if there's a Shelton story, I can do that for you guys.
Great, thank you.
The only thing, Jeff, I I would add just real quick, I did have a conversation briefly with Representative McEwen yesterday afternoon. We talked a little bit about capital budget. And again, to Joe's point earlier, some of those lower-dollar projects in the 35th Legislative District appeal to him and to Representative Griffey. These are the the food banks and the shelters and and those things. So especially given the the challenges that we're facing, those are going to be appealing, but that doesn't mean that we can't ask for and he won't ask for and Representative Griffey won't ask for the bigger items like the Well One Modernization. I mean, we know that that is a critical infrastructure need that we have to have to get funded at some point, same with the others. And then the other point, he he sort of gave me his proxy, if you will, to work with committee staff to find a funding source in the transportation budget that would be appropriate to to pay off that latecomer agreement. Again, it's it's a fairly big ticket item in a challenging time where transportation dollars are scarce, but we could at least work towards finding a funding source. And if we can't get it this go-around, we could always come back in future sessions. But it's going to take a little bit of spade work in terms of the the policy and the funding source, just because it's such a unique problem that doesn't exist, I don't think, anywhere else in the state of Washington, at least in terms of a an agreement with the city and the state agency. So we're in uncharted territory.
We pride ourselves on being unique.
And I'm sorry, guys, I I pulled out about every trick in the book to get that in the budget last time, and we we got to the very last stage and couldn't quite get it done. We had a little policy disagreement with the governor's office, but we're on the radar now, and we're not going to give up for sure.
Kathy vowed to make cinnamon rolls this time.
It's all the we need, right?
Push, we need to get it. Are there any other questions for for Troy?
No. I think as far as like the latecomer stuff, you know, and if you're looking for stories from Shelton, you know, I know it's a big ticket item, but it's it's also the story about our future. And and I know that they've heard that from you, Troy, and I think maybe it's time for us to get some business owners up there with you, to sit next to you and start talking about what it really means for the Western Gateway Project and what it means for our downtown and whatnot, too.
Yeah, I will be talking with Troy probably tomorrow about a way we can tie in that that just just occurred to me today, actually. So I'll be I'll be touching base with him tomorrow on another angle.
Well, that's that's good to hear. I think Jeff would agree with me. We were both up up on the Hill last session, and I think the one arrow in our quiver we were missing was that specific economic development piece where we could point and say, well, if this wasn't in place, we could have this, this and this. So hopefully, we'll we'll be able to add that to our arsenal when we we head up there in January for sure.
Absolutely. Thank you, Troy. I appreciate your time.
No problem. Do you need me to hang out or do you want me to?
I think you're good, Troy.
Yeah, I think I think go enjoy the go enjoy the sunshine.
All right.
Thanks, Troy. Thank you.
Good night.
All right. A lot of information, huh? Okay. Next on the agenda is an update on our water meter project. Public Works Director Jay, is he here? There he is. Got some details for us.
So good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Counselors, Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. I am going to share my screen. Okay, can everybody see my slideshow?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm giving a presentation tonight about our water system and metering. So it's called advanced metering. So, um, it's called, uh, advanced metering, uh, infrastructure. And, um, basically what the project is, is to take the meters and, uh, to replace them and to put transmitters on them. Let me switch to the next slide. Give me just a moment. Hold on just a second. Okay. Come on slideshow. I'm going to start the slideshow again. I could just give me a moment. Okay.
You got it.
A PowerPoint isn't being nice to me.
Try arrow keys if the mouse isn't working.
Yeah, I tried that. So do you see the slideshow again?
Yep.
Okay, there it is. Okay. So, um, what we want to do is modern, modernize our system, um, to better manage our water resources. Um, what we want to do is, uh, exchange out the smaller brass water meters, um, with new census meters and, uh, put a transmitter on them. And so that transmitter, uh, operates at the nine hundred megahertz frequency. Uh, census has licenses for this channel. And, um, what we'll do is sort of convert over slowly is what the proposal is. So as we get new meters in, um, we'll be converting them over to, um, uh, this fixed base system and, um, be able to start a drive-by radio read system. So if you look at the bottom of the screen here, hopefully you can see my arrow, we'll start driving by and picking up meter reads. And the ones that don't come up, um, we continue to open the lid and manually read them. Eventually, when we get the majority of the meters done, um, will be, the system has two different transmitters in it. We'll convert over to the AMI system, which is a fit on a water reservoir. We'll put an antenna up there and it will pick up the readings from the residential commercial meters and go directly to the finance department and it will eliminate the man in the truck. Um, in Newburgh, um, we were at eight, the AMR system, we had about sixty five hundred meter assets and it would take us about a day to a day and a half, uh, to drive by and get all the readings. And, uh, we were converting over to the antenna based system, um, as I left. Um, right now, um, we're real busy. And so if I go to the next slide, uh, the existing system, we've got about thirty eight hundred meters. Majority of them are smaller meters. Um, the majority of them are in excess of twelve years of age. The AWA says that you should replace meters every twenty years. Um, they tend to read low over time. Um, the averages, they read low. Um, typically brass meters don't ever read high. They can be anywhere from ten to twenty percent low, depending on the installation. Um, and as they get older, it gets worse and worse and worse. So, uh, every month we open up every meter box. You can see that down below here and pick up the lid, read the dial, enter it into this little data collector. And if you can see the reading here, the dial, um, it takes a little bit of training to read. This is a leak detection. This spins really fast. So you'll know if you have a leak of, if that's turning and you have no faucets on in your house. And then you, you move your way to, uh, the arrow and then you start reading numbers. Well, so then they punch it into the data collector. We download it into an aging, uh, Windows PC. Uh, finance uploads it and they say, hey, that meter reading that you got's way off. What's going on? So then the guy drives back out and says, oh, I typed it in wrong or whatever, or the meter isn't reading at all, right? So, um, it takes quite a bit of time. Uh, we got a couple of people, um, for about three weeks every month, uh, out reading meters and getting them over to the finance department. So a lot of our meters are out of the warranty period and they need to be replaced. Uh, the meter boxes fill up with rainwater and dirt causing a lot of reading problems. Over time, the way we're currently doing it, as you add more meters, we are out quite a bit more time, uh, reading meters. I already talked about the inaccuracy of the meters. Um, the state requires that the system loss to be less than ten percent. So we know what we produce because we have meters at the well site that monitors how much water is leaving the wells. Then at the meter end, we read that. Then we do some adjustments for fires and, um, filling of, of, uh, like, uh, from developer water, they get hydrant meters. So we do a bunch of adjustments and, uh, we want to be under ten percent. We were at eight percent last year. Prior years were at twelve percent. So the state was sort of getting on us. Um, the unaccounted for water last year, luckily it was under ten. Um, with more accurate meters, we're going to be able to really get that number down quite a bit lower. So a large part of the water loss is actually just inaccuracy of the, the meters and their reading. Um, right now the customer has limited use information. We're only giving them the reading once a month. Um, we have to train people constantly on, uh, the field workers and the customer service people that answer the phone. And then, uh, the most important thing is if field staff needs to know where all thirty eight hundred and sixty four meters are, right? So you can't find some of them, especially if you're the new guy, you'd sort of forgot. And, uh, you gotta go back and someone else else ask them out and help you and that sort of thing. And then some meters are in high traffic areas, fence yards, dogs are a problem, right? Um, that sort of thing. So the current meeting process, uh, meter reading process, uh, we have the thirty six, uh, eighty seven meters. We have eight routes. We have so many of them. We do them in routes in, in eight batches. We go to each meter, um, enter the reading in the handheld device. And then, uh, we download everything and, uh, they process the data. And then they give us, uh, the odd data readings and we go back and check again. And, um, then we go back out and recheck, then we get back to finance and, uh, hopefully get the billing correct. So with the AMI system, uh, you ultimately would use the fixed base antenna. It will transmit, uh, readings, uh, right to the utility billing console, um, at whatever, uh, interval you set, uh, in the system. That information is also available to the customer. So the system also recognizes, uh, zero water use when the meter is broken and isn't reading anything. Unusual high water wa- consumption is read by the meter. It be- it gets smarter and smarter. It knows what you used in the prior months, year to date, that sort of thing. It knows at three in the morning, you shouldn't be using water constantly. Means you have a leak. We get a hold of the, the customer. We'll be able to do that on a weekly basis rather than a monthly or even farther out basis. So, uh, we'll be able to give a lot of better customer service. So the proposed system is, um, on the smaller meters, we put in these eye pearls. We put in the transmitter. You can see here the transmitter mounts to the lid. The meter goes in, in place of the brass meter. We put a fixed base antenna on a reservoir. Currently we're having a propagation study done. We're hopeful we're only going to need one fixed base antenna, um, not two. Um, there'll be more to come on that. So the benefits of the AMI upgrade are innumerate of, um, twenty four, uh, seven access to your water use information. You can actually call up what your actual real-time reading is also takes a few minutes, but it, it will ping the meter and tell you what you're doing right then. Um, so you can reduce your, your water bill. Well, your sewer bills based on your water bill also. So you get, uh, a double benefit there. So, uh, the reduction of water loss, um, you know, their pipe can break while they're gone too. We'll know that they have a breakage and be able to, uh, send someone out, knock on the door, do whatever. Um, stay in state regulations with, uh, the, the water loss. We'll have a twenty year warranty on the new meters, which is really good. These meters don't have any moving parts. Uh, they actually use a magnetic, uh, telemetry in there. Um, at Newburgh, we had people that tried to fool the technology by putting magnets on their meter thinking that they could mess it up. It has technology in there that knows when you're trying to introduce another magnetic field and, uh, it will send us an alarm. So, uh, that sort of thing. That we can do account transfers and shut off. So when you move and we want to get a final reading, we just go to the console and get it um, and give you an accurate reading right then. And, um, then obviously set up a new account. Um, we can install these things called census outline meters where the console can actually shut off the meter right from the console if we choose. These are people with high activity where every couple of months we're shutting off the meter or locking or doing that sort of thing. So we can put better technology in those, um, that, uh, people aren't walking around your property anymore, right? Um, that is good for the property owner. Um, we also have decreased transportation employee costs. We have field injuries. Uh, we just had a person hurt his back by lifting a real heavy meter lid, which wasn't good. Um, we also can get, uh, system pressure and temperature information. And, um, it also will help us with mainline leaks. Um, in addition to customer leaks, the system will help monitor for mainline leaks that we, we're not able to do right now. And, uh, we'll be, eventually we'll gain a person back or, or two people. And we can be off being more proactive on other things in the system, you know, out on the reservoirs and fire hydrant flushing and valve turning and all that. Anyways, and the meter reading is once per hour compared to once a month. And anyways, uh, we can, and then it downloads from the meter six times per day, which is pretty good stuff for everybody. So the cost, I have a pretty good breakdown here. I got a good handle on that. It's about a million and a half, uh, to one point seven million. So a couple of different options, you know, in the future, we can self-perform the project. That's on the right here, number two. So a contractor will charge three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get it done in about eight weeks. That gets us up to the one seven. City staff though, it'll take us about four years. We did that in Newburgh. It was fine. We got out, got them all done, have to allocate, allocate a bunch of people to it, about a thousand installs a year. Cause we're busy doing a bunch of other things, right? That's how you hit the cost down a little bit. So next steps, uh, we're working on the propagation study to confirm the number of antennas. Um, we have, uh, the twenty twenty one budget priority funding discussions. There's other, uh, water projects, obviously, in the works. Um, we have to do some revisions to the design and construction manual for the, the meter installs. And, um, we need to just make sure they, uh, we update the standard and we conform with that. That's new lids because of the, the puck, the antenna puck and, and, uh, the, the meter and, uh, the transmitter. And then, uh, we have to update the meter reading equipment with field tablets. And, uh, we have to integrate that with finance and get rid of that old PC and old data collector. We need to train staff that's field workers and, um, uh, customer service and finance on new procedures. And then, um, then we start beginning these replacements. We've already put one in. We're testing it out at the maintenance yard to see, uh, how well it works, accuracy of readings, um, how we like it, that sort of thing. And, uh, staff likes it so far. Uh, census is a huge, they're a goal, global company. So we're not the new kid on the block here with this. You know, we're one of the latecomers. So, uh, this technology's been proven over and over. So, um, we're not on the bleeding edge here. We're on the cutting edge. But, uh, we're a little late to the game here on that. Um, so that's my presentation. Uh, I would be available for questions.
Have a question on third party damage to the sensors themselves. How do, how do most jurisdictions handle that? Like when you were in Newburgh, let's say, you know, somebody parks their car on the lid of the thing. Um, cause believe it or not, we do have that problem, right? In the city with the lap of sidewalks and places like that. Um, are we, is there any thought to maybe even relocating some meters and things like that that are in trouble spots? You had mentioned, you know, there are fenced backyards and things like that. Um, or is there really no, no point with this, with it now being all remote?
Well, with remote, you still can't be driving on the meter box ongoing, right? And so you'll see here, uh, we have meter replacements. We also have the meter box and lid replacement right here. We're figuring, we're going to have a bunch of lids and boxes. We're figuring in seven hundred. So when we're out there, yeah, we're going to move around a little bit. If they're in a bad spot, I mean, you're already standing there. Um, you know, it takes another half hour to hour to move it over a little bit and surely we're, we're going to do that work also.
Great.
Uh, Jay, I have a question. Um, in terms of, um, dollars, do we have any, uh, well, how long that would take the, to pay for itself? Or, you know, what I'm getting at, um, in the long run, how many dollars will save or is that kind of hard to predict?
Yeah, that's hard to get. It's system dependent, uh, mayor, uh, that, uh, our system is unique. Uh, we got a bunch of brass meters out there of varying quality and age. And, um, to do that type of study, uh, takes months or about six months. What you do is you pull meters that are one to five years old, six to ten, eleven to fifteen, fifteen plus. You send them out, get them bench tested, then you sit down and go to each one of those accounts and enter the accuracy readings and assume those, you'll average those readings out over all the meters of that age group. And you come back with a report. And so I was talking to specialists about that. And they said with our type of system and our age of meters, that is very likely there's some cost savings here. Their guesstimate is the payback period, just by having better reading and better billing minus the customers reducing their water usage. The revenue will still be up some on sewer and water. And they were thinking it was probably a seven to ten year payback period, just generally based on other systems, um, of, of our size and our age.
And that.
We decided not to move forward without though.
I just want to point out that doesn't include, uh, the savings and staff time, uh, for the people reading the meter.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Fuel for the trucks, uh, you know, all those types of things. So that's.
It actually will speed up that payback period some.
Absolutely.
And outside of the labor reallocation, we've always looked at the customer experience, um, utilizing online billing, the ability for folks to opt in to things like project share, monitor their usage. Um, but I would also anticipate when we see this shrink our, our timelines for the actual billing, because right now there's so many steps to even get it before we can send it out to bill. And if I recall correctly, and Jeff, if I'm wrong, by all means say so. Um, but we did a test about a, a year or eighteen months ago where we gave more of a cushion between the time that the bills hit the door and the time that we red tagged. And we saw a lot fewer people having their water shut off, which meant we had fewer staff members out doing that. We had fewer of our residents experiencing that problem. And so that in and of itself could save significant time. And quite frankly, could be a real benefit to our everyday residents.
Yeah, that, uh, that would be, I think, not only the accurate reads, but the ability to get real-time reads uh, and the billing process, uh, all included will add up to a much uh, easier and more user friendly, uh, customer experience. As well as the ability to monitor, like, like Jay mentioned, if you see your, your water bill going crazy, we'll be able to notify you much quicker than, uh, a month or a two month lag. Uh, and that'll save our water use and that'll save huge bills for our customers or write offs for the city because there's a, a break or, uh, or something else that's strictly attributable to that, uh, excessive water use.
Jeff, I forgot the split you told me between sewer and water funds.
So we've been, uh, looking at, uh, uh, ways to fund this so that we could provide options to council. And we think, uh, although we have to investigate this a little bit more, uh, I can't be a hundred percent sure on this, but, uh, we think that we can do a fifty fifty split, uh, of the costs between the water and the sewer pump. And we just have to, uh, council has to, uh, uh, decide if our reserves at the moment, which above, above the policy that the council adopted. Uh, if this is the best use of those funds or if there's other projects, uh, that would be, uh, more beneficial to the city. And we're going to provide that analysis to you and give you our recommendation based on the data. Uh, but that's something that, uh, the council will need to, need to take a look at and will provide you with that information and have that discussion at a later time.
Okay. And Jay, why would we, um, not do this all at once? Why would we do this over, what you said, four years?
Yeah, correct. Uh, just, uh, because of budgeting and reserves, uh, that we would consider, you know, parsing the budget out over a four-year period. You save some on the install cost. Um, but, uh, we've divided it out into four different budget years. Uh, we did that at. it out into four different budget years. We did that at the city of Newburgh because we didn't have, you know, the one point five million or one point eight million to go do the project immediately.
Okay. And I would imagine that all, all new meters would be supplied by the, a builder or whoever's for new projects?
That's correct. That will be changing over to the new meter standard, the eye pearl here in the coming months. And the transmitter will go into those boxes also. And we probably won't have the transmitters activated for a little while, but we're switching over everything slowly. If, if council wants to do that, I mean, we could still save, we have brass on the shelf right now and we could stay with that. But it's my recommendation to move to the new mirrors, the new transmitters in this interim period until we get through the budgeting and all that. But in the meantime, we are putting in the newer system. You know, when we're out there, we might as well put in these newer assets and then see where the bu- budget process takes us.
Okay. And how much are they per meter? Is it in here?
Yes, it is.
Page. Page nine?
I didn't put the actual number in there. So the three-quarter inch Ipro meter was somewhere around a hundred and seventy dollars. And the transmitters were down around a hundred and ten, I think, right in that range. You can actually do the math. I can divide those out and give you exact numbers. I, I could send you a better breakdown if you want.
So not much more than the brass meters?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I have just a question, mostly technical and I think simple. We talked earlier on that the existing brass is about a twenty-year lifespan that was the industry standard. And this new one, we're looking at a twenty-year warranty. So does that mean that we anticipate this has a longer lifespan for the asset? Or are we just looking at, we actually have warranty for the entire twenty years in case something were to happen?
Yeah, well, the brass meters have a ten-year warranty. That census is very confident in this Ipro product. They give a twenty-year warranty. There's really no moving parts in there. It's electronics that are going to go bad in the meter. You could do battery replacements on them, too, if you have to. But they do estimate that the meter is going to make it through, you know, twenty-plus years of battery. At that point, though, any asset starts to age, right? Since there's no moving parts, so I think we're quite a bit better off having those twenty years from now than we are with the brass meters.
Thank you. And I anticipate there's still some sort of mechanism for a homeowner shut-off valve. Didn't see that the one, one pictured there, but I would assume there's some mechanism that if, God forbid, the pipe breaks and things are happening at the street, there's a homeowner shut-off option.
That's correct. There is a way for the homeowner to shut off right in the meter box. Our standard yoke isn't changing. So if you go open your meter box, you're going to see a city shut off and a customer shut off in there. Then by the plumbing code, you're also supposed to have another shut off right at your house also. So if you have a newer house, you should locate that. Usually have to dig it up and find it. That's the place where your kids can shut it off and that sort of thing. When you open that meter box and look at it, it's good to get a meter tool, it's a little wrench to turn that in the box. It isn't just a standard valve with a handle, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I just appreciate there's, you know, options A, B, C, in case of emergency. I'm, I'm the planner. And then as we talk about, if we do a phased approach at putting these in, what, what is the prioritization of strategy for which areas would receive meters more at what time? I know we talked about the access challenged locations. But beyond that, what would be your recommendation or strategy for phasing in the meter replacement?
Yeah, obviously you, you jump all over the city as new development happens. You put in the newer meters, right? And then you go in, though, and of the eight routes, they're all, you know, walking routes, if you know what I mean, which makes sense to go into one of the eight routes and just finish that whole route. We've been doing them for years that way. Everybody knows this meter, that meter, this meter. And so with that institutional knowledge, I recommend we just start knocking them out in the eight routes. Probably use, get maybe the hilly and the steeper routes done first and then do the flatter, easier stuff last, I propose.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Council members, if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you either in briefings or in another meeting like this. I think we have just a couple of minutes before the regular council meeting starts. So get prepared for that and get, get ready to go on that agenda.
All right.
Thanks, Jay.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Jay. Very, very good. The study session is adjourned now at, what is it? Five fifty-six. See you back in a few minutes.